Good evening and welcome everybody to the Shasberry School District Board Meeting. We will begin with citizens' comments, if any, in the audience. Megan?
I have a quick thank you. I've been the chaperone with Mr. St. Boyer's group for Starbase. And just thanks so much for taking care of that expense. The kids love it and it's really nice to see physics being taught and a way to fifth graders. So, thanks all very much for that. Hopefully we continue to support that way.
Thank you. Anybody else? How about board members? Okay, hearing none. The presentation of the comprehensive assessment plan.
At the last board meeting, it was requested that we give a little bit of a summary of the assessments we use here at Shasberry and the SVSU for that matter. So, what you're looking at here is pretty much answering the major questions you guys asked last board meeting. What do we give? Why do we give it? Who takes it? When do they take it? How long does the assessment take? And this all really starts with this Vermont School Quality Standards, which are a state of, or a set of rules and regulations set up by the School Board Association of Vermont. In our section 21, 23.2, you can read there, which pretty much states that the SVSU has to develop and implement a local comprehensive assessment system that assesses the standards approved by the State Board of Education. So, it's really coming from that document of why we have the assessment system that we have. I also put a couple other important points on there. One is, we do have some students that move quite a bit from school to school within the district, and it's nice to have a similar assessment system from one school to the next. So, if we get a school coming from a bench school, or a student coming from a bench school, for example, we can look at similar data that we're familiar with coming from that school. The third piece of information on that first page is data triangulation. So, when we look at a student, we really want to look at three data points at least to get a picture of that student. It's not really fair to have one little snapshot, one little data point to decide where that student is academically. So, we have at the top of the pyramid, formative classroom assessments, which is what teachers do on a, up to a daily basis, in assessing where the student is in the learning process. We have interim assessments, which is the MAP and AmesWeb, we'll talk about in detail in a minute. And then we have summative assessments, which are kind of like the end of the year. That's assess where the student learned throughout the whole instructional period of the school year. And that would be S-Back and the Science Kneecap Test. So, this is the, really the outline of why we do what we do for the assessments. Are there any questions on that front page before we go into details of the exams that we give? Okay, so the back page is a table that outlines the number of assessments that we give throughout the year. At the top, you'll see MAP, which we hear, you hear us talk about quite a bit. It's a MAP test. It's given three times a year, fall, winter, spring. It's anywhere between a 45-minute to 60-minute test, three times a year. Students have more time if they need to take it. It's computer-based, so they're logging on to a website. They take the test. It's adaptive test, so it kind of follows their answers. If they're struggling a little bit, the questions get a little bit easier. If they do well, the questions get a little bit tougher. So, again, that's in reading, language usage, and math. It's a normative exam, which means it's kind of, it's comparing them to their peers throughout the country. So, it's a normed exam. AmesWeb is again given three times a year, fall, winter, spring. It's a lit, more of a, it's a literacy and math, but it's more of a fluency test. It's usually a quick exam, sometimes group given for mathematics, for example. Sometimes it's individual, where a teacher listens to a student read. They see their math fluency with facts, and they see their reading fluency in, in reading. That again is a normative exam. They take up to 25 minutes for the different exams they give, or tests they give, three times a year. It kind of depends on the grade level as far as how much time it is. It can take some time for a classroom teacher, if they were to do it with a whole class, if they're listening to every student read a passage or two, for example. But there are some that think the math, the math fluency is pretty quick. It's an eight-minute exam the students take. They see how many math facts they can get in eight minutes. Both those, both those MAP and AmesWeb, MAP is first grade to sixth grade. They take that, that test. And AmesWeb is K to six, so it's everybody in the school. And AmesWeb's a progress monitoring tool. We use that to kind of say, okay, let's get out how the students are doing fluently in reading and math, and monitor that progress throughout the year, those three benchmark periods. The next one is the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium, which is the S-Back, which we just started last week for the first time. The whole state of Vermont started just a couple of weeks ago. It's a brand-new exam, state mandated in reading and math. It's, again, that's similar to the MAP. It's, it's group administered on a website. Students log on to a website. Teacher assigns a test to them. And it's a computer adaptive test, similar to MAP, where the test kind of follows their answers and see how they're doing, and adjusts the next question comparatively. There's also two performance tasks in math and reading, which means the teacher does a model lesson to the students, and then they do a performance task, and they answer questions about that lesson on, on the computer. That's given once a year in the spring. Obviously, we're doing it now. Approximately seven hours, give or take. Students have as much time as they really need to take it, but they, they average it out to be about seven hours for the exam for that. Then New England Common Assessment, science. We don't do the kneecap reading in mathematics anymore. We do do the science once a year in May for fourth grade only. Again, that's from the state. It is a normative exam, again. Compare it with their peers. Grades four, eight, and 11 take it, but we're only, only have fourth graders here, obviously, so only the fourth graders take it. Approximately five hours, one time a year with the prep, and then taking it. Again, there's a performance task with that also, where teachers kind of teach them, teach the students a science experiment, and then they answer questions about that later on. That is a paper and pencil exam, not a computer exam. And then the last one is the NEAP, which is the National Assessment for Educational Progress, which our fourth graders took this year. That's a, that's a national exam to kind of see where students are in grade levels throughout the whole country. And it's, it's more of a lottery pick. They kind of call you up, and they say, you're going to do it this year, and you, you prepare for an exam period. We did it this winter, last February, I believe it was. It's about a 90-minute exam. They come in, they do everything. There's no prep for it, really, except for us setting up the logistics for it. A group of people come in, and they administer the exam with our students, and then they take everything away, and they go about their business. And again, they use that for nation, nationwide statistics. I also put some definitions on there for some of the different terms that I've used, so that you had that for reference. Normative assessment, which is comparing students to their peers. Formative assessment, which is basically like a teacher using daily assessments to kind of see where students at. Interim assessment, we use that during the learning process, in the benchmarking periods like MAP and AmesWeb, those three times a year. And then the summative, again, is at the end of the year, we look at the whole learning period, and say, okay, what did they learn throughout this school year in mathematics and reading and language arts, for example? I did not add up the total time throughout the year for the, but you could see there how much time is approximately taken for assessment here. Do we have, are there any questions on these?
I've got a couple of jobs.
Yeah, Larry.
On the kneecap, the science test, will that continue beyond this year?
My understanding was this year and next year. I wasn't sure. After that, I haven't heard.
And the state of Vermont, right after you folks got involved with the testing on the SBAC, the state of Vermont released the news that they would not use those scores?
Correct.
Did we, have we achieved some value out of going through the process? I mean, do you?
We, well, I was going to-
Because I presume we did go through-
I was going to speak to in the principal's report, but we, we started the S, we had a choice. The window opened, I think, a couple of weeks ago, wasn't it, Laura?
March 17th.
March 17th, and it goes to June 17th, where they give you a window to get the exam, the test done. We chose last week and this week at Shasberry as the times that we would do it. We're finishing it up this week. We've got just make-ups we're doing for kids that's, that have been absent. The, we're learning how the system works, which is very similar to the MAP. It's run very well. The technology-wise has run very well. The Chromebooks have been spot-on. They've made, they give the teachers a latitude to say, okay, we want to do the testing that, here. We want to do the testing here in sixth grade, and here in third grade. So, they have a little bit of flexibility. Where in the past, we pretty much shut down the computer lab, and say, okay, the gear lab is shut down for two or three weeks, because kids would have to go in and do the test. But we've had very few problems as far as the technology itself.
Okay.
Yep.
So, again, you're seeing some benefits to walking through this, and-
Yes.
Will anything come from the actual scoring? Will you be able to draw any conclusions? Or won't we even receive that?
That's a good question, Laura. Laura Bujo is our Director of Curriculum and Assessment. I asked her to join us in case there were some questions that I could answer.
Hi, Laura.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
So, there, there is an online reporting system. Again, everything is new. Everything is new.
Right, I understand.
And they've provided us with training in what that will look like. We've received information that we will hopefully be able to see some type of data in July. Again, because it's new, we have no idea what that will look like. I can't tell the, it's going to be, we're, the S-Back is based on the Common Core State Standards. It's assessing the Common Core State Standards. So, the report should state where a child sits in relation to being college and career-ready. That's a piece of information, but I haven't been able to, we won't know until we see it. But that's kind of their timeline for what they'll be able to share with us.
Did, I found it ironic that the state, the same day they released the, noticed the scores wouldn't be used, they released a report as to making good use of the new assessments.
Or did-
So, I was, I was curious if this was part of the initial training that perhaps gave you some insight as to what we could expect, or what-
Yes. So, the, so the, so there's a, just like in our district, we have our district team. So, the state has their team. And the state has a contract with a company to administer the S-Back, which is AIR, the American Institute of Research. And as they put together resources for us to use, they roll them out in either like a, in a webinar format, or they call us, convene us. And about a month ago, they convened us for the online, it was a webinar reporting system, but it was more about how to manipulate the system, and until we actually have data to look at. But we'll be able to sort data based on demographics, like we were before. I mean, and again, it's going to be based on college and career readiness. So, there, if you go into the portal, which you all have access to, you can go into the resource tab and look at kind of, there, there are information pieces in there that you can access that'll give you information as well. But again, it's all, it's all new. So, we're already all working on it together at the same time.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Hang on. The Smarter Balanced, well, you've got approximately seven hours. That's not, you don't do all that testing in one day, right?
Got it, yeah.
It's overtime. Okay, that's what I thought.
It's four tests total.
Okay.
You spread it out for two weeks. Yeah.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, I think I heard, I think I heard you say that we get feedback from S-Back when we're taking it spring and July?
The, it is meant to, because the system is new and everything is new, I think, I don't understand, anticipate, I think they're anticipating, they're giving themselves some time this year, because they're learning the process as we go along as well. So, I don't, I'll be interested to see in the long term that the turnover might be quicker because it's a computer adaptive system.
Okay. But it's a, it's a summative assessment, so it's, it's not really expected to be used. It's expected to be like, you're not using it to evaluate students on the fly.
Right, exactly. That's formative.
To compare one school to another next year, right?
Yeah.
Now, the other test, when do we get the feedback on those? How long does it take to grade Ames and-
The MAPs is immediate. MAPs is immediate. I mean, the students see the score on their screen. The teacher's going to get the report the next day online, and see the classroom scores. So, that's immediate. AmesWeb is fairly immediate also. S-Back, we talked about. New England Common Assessment takes, the science takes some time, because that is a written test, paper and pencil. So, we have to send that information back to the state. They score it, and then we get the scores usually in the fall. The NEAP, I'm not sure, this is my first year I've had to do that. We didn't do it last year. I'm not sure when we get the scores from the NEAP back for those.
Anybody else?
I'll just make one of the comments, just because it amuses me. My daughter, I've been probing her about the various tests that, that we make. And for whatever reason, she likes S-Back. She says it's like a puzzle. It's like brain teasers. She doesn't like math.
Okay.
Nobody, Larry?
No, I thought Jeff was going to continue with-
Oh, okay.
No?
No, I, no.
I thought he was all set.
No, I think-
Then I did have one.
Sure.
On the AmesWeb?
Yes.
That, my last meeting, the question came up that it seemed like the SVSU had inserted a, a test into our system. Was that, was that the one?
Well, the, both MAP and AmesWeb are district in local.
Right, I understood MAP, but MAPs, man.
Yeah.
And I thought I heard you say the other was fairly new, and-
It's new the last couple of years. Yeah, it's newer of the ones that are on here, except for Smarter Balanced. But again, that's that, that fluency piece that we're looking for, for students. And we use that progress monitoring. It's kind of key to kind of see how fluent students are in mathematics and, and reading. So, it is fairly new in those terms. Because MAP can't really do that, because S-Back can't do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for the report.
Yeah.
Okay, next up.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
When we look at the assessment length, can we take that to be the total time dedicated to these tests? Or is there also prep time for the teachers or the students that's not included yet?
Yeah, for, for example, like, when I said the AmesWeb, some of them are classroom. I could give you all the same math test for eight minutes. We all take it, and then the teachers have to score, so there's time scoring it. There's some fluency reading where a child has to sit with an adult, and they have to read, and the teacher's looking through every word they read. So, that does take some time. The teacher away from the class, or it takes the student away from the class, or having another adult do it. So, there is some prep time for some of these exams, yeah.
So, the AmesWeb, 25 minutes is per student?
Yes. Again, that's to kind of depend on the, on the grade.
Does that include the test part of it too? I mean, at the end of that, is there an assessment? You're saying the child is reading back, and-
Yeah, so the teacher will read the passage with the child, or look at the passage with the child, and say, okay, you missed this many words out of, you know, or you read this many words for one minute. Yeah, and it gives you a-
So, it's an intense 25 minutes, then?
Well, no, it's not 25 minutes total for all the tests, I'm sorry.
Right.
So, it's not just 20, it might be an eight-minute, like I said, it might be an eight-minute math test. Or it might be a one-minute read, cold read from a, a passage. But that's total of the, of the different assessments we have for AmesWeb.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Last call. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Let me get over some things that, or given tasks that I think that I received at the last meeting on 3/11. Since then, I have had a meeting with your newest board member, Jeffrey Leek. He came in and had a orientation meeting with me. I had previously done that with Holly. And I think that I enjoyed meeting Jeff, and we got to know each other a little better. The other, one of the other tasks, one of the questions that came up was referring to Dave Durfee's wife as the new treasurer in Shasberry, and is there conflict? So, I did contact the school's attorney, and the answer is as follows. The offices held by Dave and his wife are not incompatible, as that is defined by stature. Only your lawyer would phrase it that way. The only office where a spousal relationship creates incompatibility is in the position of other. So, therefore, there, what that means, there really is not a conflict. The spousal prohibition does not apply to the offices of school director and/or treasurer. So, if you want to pass that to Richard, so he can have that for the record. There was a tabling of a budget transfer, and, from, yeah, that Larry had questioned, and I have some answers on that. It was about the, the library sub, and there was $2,000 transferred into that account. And also, I don't know if you questioned also the library salary. There, there was a horizontal move that was not budgeted in there, so $1,500 was moved into the salary for the library account. $2,000 moved into the library sub. It's not anticip, the count was in a negative, so that's why the $2,000 was being transferred in. If it isn't used between now and the end of the year, it'll just roll into the, general, just as the account that had been transferred out of, which was a severance account that you weren't using. Some small amounts, a $30 transfer for the subcaller, that was unbeknownst to us. Katherine McClure had granted them a 2.5% increase, and that's what the $30 was. That was the raise for the year, for the subcaller. And that was it, that was it. So, but you've tabled that, and I don't have that for you to move on. I know, it's not in your packet, is it?
No.
So, so you'll have the explanation, and the transfer will have to wait again to the, to the next meeting.
And hopefully, we're remembered.
I'll make, I'll put that again on my task. There was a question asked about the TAM Waste Management amount on your, on your warrants. It is the same monthly rate, even in the summer. It's tw, it's, the amount is taken and divided over 12 months. You requested a survey of the bus count. You have that, you do have that in your packet?
Yeah.
So, you, you have the, the survey. I don't know what you want to do with it, have a discussion, but put it on a future agenda. It, it does seem that one bus is, particularly in the afternoon, is a little low on ridership. You'll note that there are signatures on the prepared report on the vouchers, who's as a request. You just got the report that you had asked for last month, so that takes care of things from the task list. Couple of other things that I do want to bring up. The last, last time we met, I told you that we had had a legislative breakfast early in, in March, and it was poorly attended. We did have one on the 30th, and we, I was one of the best attendants that I've seen, and I've been going to these for four years now. We had five members of the House and Senate there, and with the, the timing, that's what's going on in the House and Senate right now as far as education bills, I, I do think it was a meaningful meeting. One thing that we did hear from members, that it's, it's difficult for them to make monthly meetings, and they've asked us to consider, particularly in session, that maybe we, you know, scale back, because we're not the only organization that's having legislative breakfasts. There may be one prior to session, one mid-session, and one after session. So, I told them that we would consider that. I also told you last month that we had narrowed down the search for a high school principal to two candidates, and that I was going to be conducting site visits for both candidates. And I did do that. And last night at the MAU board meeting, they did appoint Glenda Cresto to be the new principal of Mount Enthing Union High School. And a couple of other things on the education front that you might already be aware of through your organization, but I'd, I'd want to mention it. One is House Bill 76, and as I was coming to this meeting, I don't have the latest information on it, but that was scheduled for a vote this afternoon. 76 would, and maybe someone has more recent information than I do, 76 would ban strikes and ban contract impositions, and instruct that the, the Vermont, different Vermont Education Associations, the teachers, the, the administrators, and school boards meet together, work on a plan on how you would come to a, a conclusion, a successful conclusion of negotiations without binding arbitration, because that bill would also ban arbitration. They were calling for a close vote this afternoon. I do not know at this time what happened on that. The other one is House Bill 361, and I just want to talk to you, that was, that was passed by the House last April 2nd, so last Thursday. And that's education funding, education spending, and of particular interest, education governance. The stated intent is to move Vermont towards an integrated pre-K through 12 educational system. In short, and this, I know is controversial, we need to be aware of it. In short, a supervisory union becoming a supervisory district. They say the intent is to keep local school boards, but no one is really answering what authority local school boards would have. So, depending on how you feel on that, this is the time for you to let your feelings be known to your local representatives. Some highlights, and I might be repeating myself to some of you, is the small school grants go away. Doesn't really affect here. It does affect in the supervisory union Woodford. They, the grant becomes a merger assistance grant that, like, say, Shasberry and Woodford merged together, the small school grant money, which is about $45,000, would forever live into that merged school district to, to help offset those costs. So, it's an indefinite payment for schools that merge. Not a lot of money. The hold harmless provision, again, something that at this time does not really affect us. Hold harmless refers to, you would receive the same amount of state funding as you did last year, even if you lost students, or it's used to be, it'd be, you would get, I mean, the current 3.5% calculation is the hold harmless of the school's equalized pupils of the current year prior than the, what it used to be was the prior year. So, you would always have the higher number. And what would happen is they wanted to go back down to what your real numbers are. So, you've heard the term phantom students before, and, and school districts getting money for those students. That, that would be eliminated under this. But again, it's not something that, you know, we're not a district that has the rapidly declining enrollment. We have had declining enrollment, but not to the extent others. But the bill does state, and this is something that can't be emphasized enough, the bill does state that the preferred structure for an integrated educational system shall be a supervisory district. But then the bill goes forward, and that's where it seems to contradict, or they're trying to appease everyone. The bill also recognizes that a supervisory district may not be the best means of achieving the goals. So, districts may propose the creation, expansion, or continuation of a supervisory union with two or more member districts, but they're encouraged to include the smallest number of school districts as practable. So, the stat will then, to get that approval to remain that way, you would have to get approval from the state board. That's where the, the approval would lie. And you need to meet, they have a, a whole list of goals, that, 11 goals, actually, that you would have to achieve. And the more goals that you would hit, the more likelihood that they would allow you to stay a supervisory union. You've heard of the spending cap. That does remain, but as a, oh, by the way, the, let me go back to, if November 30th, 2017, a district is not engaged in the process to create an integrated school system, the Secretary of Education is required to develop that plan for them if this bill passes. The education spending cap is also part of this provision of this, of this bill. And in its current proposal, because we've heard many different variations of what the cap would be, the cap would not go into effect until 2018, and only so then if the statewide education spending in 2017 exceeded the total statewide education of 2016 by 2.95%. So, if, so if state, so if some of that is completely out of our control, because it would be, think of that again, what, 2018, the cap would go into place if the 2017 spending exceeded 2016 spending by 2.95%? I don't know what's going to survive. I mean, you, the, the process here, it, it's now at the Senate for markup. The new bill will come out, joint committee forums, and the debate will go on. And as I said last month, fast and furious in the probably last three weeks of the session, and what, what provisions will survive, who knows? And even on our own committees, we have debate over what we like and what we don't like. I just bring it forward to you, so that's my quick synopsis of it. And do what you will on you, what you feel is best for your school district, as far as what you say to your representatives. And that's pretty much my report.
Okay. Any questions, board members?
We've got some questions, and I don't know if Jim wants them at this point or not. We can insert them at other. It addresses some of my concerns with H-361 as well. I'm curious how we put forward a unified vote, or voice, rather, to, to say what, what we may, as a board, feel-
Right.
-about that particular bill. Having attended that same breakfast, it seemed like many of the legislators that were there had their minds made up, and in fact, had voted in, in passing it from their committee, the education committee out to the floor, had said, you know, this is what we're, we're putting forth. And whether they're hoping the Senate takes further action, or picks some pieces off, remains to be seen. But that was a pretty loud statement, to say, well, it's out of, you know, we've, we've given our stamp, and this is good enough. And there's some confusing issues in there that I think we need to, we need to look at at some point.
It's a pretty comprehensive bill. I mean, there's so many diff, you know, everything from the cap to changing, you know, some would argue eliminating supervisory unions and creating supervised districts. And depending on how you feel about consolidation is, whether you think this is a good bill or not. And you might disagree with that part, but like the cap, or not like the cap and agree with that part. So, it, it's a- So it, it's a lot to look at, and I, I don't know what, I mean, if the board, if the chair, whether you take a position on it as a board or as individuals, I, I don't know.
Well, I, I, I think eventually we'll, we'll take a stand on it as a board, I, I would assume.
When we see what the final bill is.
Yeah. I, I think what can, what's confusing is, um, what's the cap going to be? What happens when you go over that cap? Is there a penalty?
Yeah.
What's the penalty going to be?
Well, as it stands now, the penalty is that your budget is rejected.
Yeah.
And it comes back, if you exceed your cap, it comes back, and you have to, and, and this was the answer that Alice Miller gave me at that meeting.
Yeah, well, they keep saying that, but they keep changing too.
Well, that part they haven't changed. They've stood pretty, pretty solid on that. And Alice says that's where the compression will take place, is that not having the ability to spend, and then if you do, it comes back to you to reduce your budget accordingly. That's where things like teacher reduction will take place, because you will in fact have no choice. If you want to pass a budget, you're going to have to make some pretty serious cuts.
Yeah.
And it also penalizes Shasberry in particular. We've worked hard to keep our budget reasonable.
Exactly.
Um, our cap, there's a chart that the state has provided that shows you where your limits will be. Shasberry might go from our 12,100 up to 12,300 that we might be allowed to spend. Our next door neighbor receives no penalty and can continue to spend at an accelerated rate that far exceeds our example.
Yeah.
Schools in Burlington are even worse. You've got schools up there that are spending 20, 25,000 per pupil, and, and they can continue to do that without ever having to back up, where we're, we're going to be, because we haven't spent, we're going to be trapped in an area that may come to penalize us.
That's what I feel we're going to be penalized.
That's right.
Because of holding the line.
That's right.
Being, you know, conservative.
There's no incentive for us.
So you're not throwing money away. We, we spend it, we spend it on our kids, and it's like, thanks a lot.
Well, a lot of the things that are going to increase us, and our increase in our budget that will drive us to, to exceed the cap are already baked into, into the situation. Salary increases, another jump in fuel, things that we can't, we can't control. These are going to put us outside, and, and lo and behold, we won't have a cushion. Other schools will have the ability perhaps to back up and, and comfortably lower their, their budget.
As you know from that meeting that day, you know, many were predicting that the cap is not in the Senate bill and won't survive this amendment, but, you know, I wouldn't want to bet on that either.
Right.
Because the cap that was being discussed at the legislative breakfast is not the cap that's in this bill either. At that time, it was a sliding scale cap with a target of 2%, but depending on what you, how far your school was below in per pupil spending versus the state average per pupil, you know, it was a sliding scale where some schools could go up 2.9% and some were in the 1.8%, you know, depending on where you were above and below that. So it's not the cap that they said would be there, and I don't know. It's, it's, it's something that we should monitor and be aware of, and, and when that final bill comes out, that's when it's going to get crazy.
Yeah. I don't want to take up the, the whole meeting with this discussion, but it, it, one thing I find somewhat amazing is when this bill first started to be constructed, one of the things they initially talked about was student to staff ratio, okay? And the state has, has formulated their own numbers that indicate that if we were to, as a state, on a statewide average, if we were to go from 4.67 to 1 ratio, up to 5 to 1, we would save $74 million in that one move. They chose to ignore the same report that they paid for in 2013 that says the ideal student to staff ratio is, let me pick it out here, eight students to one licensed teacher. Okay? We're, we're well above that.
We're well above the state averages.
We're well above that. And yet they chose not to, to take a simple, a simple step that would have had genuine savings to the property payer, taxpayers in Shasberry and elsewhere, and go into a deep discussion about consolidation that no one, not one soul can say will save us $1 unless somebody else has found that soul. But we're going to go through this entire exercise.
That's right.
For...
And I think a lot of the stuff that they're talking about consolidating, we've already been doing for years.
Yeah.
At this school, at the SVSU level. We've already been doing it. And that's what they're talking about there. I don't think they know it. But anyway, it is frustrating.
And I hope people, you know, take an interest in it and start to look at it really what's at stake here. There's all kinds of information out there that, that says that small schools are not the problem. Small schools, less than 100 kids, spend less than 5% of the total amount that we spend on education. The big, the big problem is with the big schools. And, and obviously, big schools have big, big associations with the union, for example, and, and when we talk about caps on, on hiring or caps on teacher ratios, then obviously they, they get very excited about that, so.
Yeah.
I'm done.
You sure? Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
All right. You have one question.
Tim?
At the beginning of the recording, you mentioned a bus survey. Can you get the executive summary of that?
Yeah, it's in the packet, but I can give you a...
I can give you a copy. So, um, bus number two, in the morning, there were, this is, I'm sorry, this was the average daily riders from the week of March 16. So bus number two, there were eight riders in the morning, averaged 22 in the afternoon. Bus four, there were 47 in the morning, 45 in the afternoon. And bus 21, there were 41 in the morning and 37 in the afternoon.
So you're, it's your bus two that is under capacity at this time?
Yeah.
And these are how many passenger buses? 65?
We do have the ability, the next step would be, we do have the ability through our bus software, that we could run a scenario to see if you did with two buses, what it would do for capacity. You probably have the capacity. Our concern would be with two buses, that you might have some runs that could be an hour and a half. But we could run that, that would be the, if the board wishes to do that, we could run that through our software and see if that really is the case for next year, if you want to do that.
We did that a while ago, because I've always been asking, well, maybe we could do away with busing.
Yeah.
As a, a budget thing. I've done that for a while.
Grant?
Yeah.
Going back to the first part of January, that was the context of our question. I thought that's what we'd, we'd get back, is, is some potential changes that might be practical for us.
Well, the notes that I have is you asked for a survey, so we got the survey.
Yes.
So there's the survey, so, you know, what do you want to do with it? If you want to have us go ahead and run it through the software and see if you, what going to two buses would do to route time, that would be the, that would be my concern. Certainly would probably, you have capacity, so that would be the wish of the board.
Well, I, I would think we'd want them to run that, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Just, at least we'd have the information. I'm not saying we're going to do anything with it, but we need to know, that's all. So I would assume that.
Was this actual or expected?
This is actual.
Actual live counts?
During, during that week.
So do we want, I don't think it's anything we've got to roll down.
Yeah, Murray, put it down, no?
Thank you. Okay, good. All right. Okay. Anything else? We'll go to the financial. Okay, the Treasurers' Report, March. We don't have March's Treasurers' Report in here. We do have, um...
Yeah, we just received that, Frank.
Uh, I've got February 28th, this one.
Oh, it's 31. Yeah, these are the ones from our, that's...
Oh, okay. All right. It's got dollars. Okay, we also, um, the last month's, February 28th, we had, we accepted a Treasurers' Report we shouldn't have done. The other one, the numbers were changed to the 15,000 on the bond. And this one is, that I have hold, it's the only copy I have, is the one with, signed by Bill Fisk. But we can accept, we can accept that at next month's, this one here. Instead, we'll just do March this time. And is there any questions on March's Treasurers' Report?
March's or February?
March.
I think we're confused. Are we confused, Richard?
You're not acting on the...
We're not, uh, we're not...
We could, could we get a copy of these right now, so they could do it?
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. Because I only have that one copy.
Because remember what the issue was, you, the report should have been issued by...
Bill Fisk.
Yeah, previous treasurer.
Yeah. And the, the number was wrong on it, the 25,000.
Right, it's really 15,000.
Should have been 15. Well, anyways, is there anything else on the...
You have, while we're doing it, this, I also have, this is a request for a budget transfer for your generator project.
Okay. Now we saved some money.
Yeah.
500 bucks.
And you have the funds in your, um...
Yeah. Transportation.
Transportation, thank you.
Yep. Yep.
So you'll need to...
Thanks, Tim, for the 500. We can use it.
You'll want it back, Frank.
This is the February.
Yeah, this will be the February.
Whoops.
We'll get that, make sure there's no questions.
What this was in February, we had the wrong treasurer's name on the bottom, and under the liabilities, 96 school bond, it said 25,000. It's now been corrected to read the correct amount, 15,000.
On the motion to accept both, Frank?
Yes.
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
No second.
Okay, Jeff seconded it. Any...
I just was wondering why, why the, the KIP funds numbers changed? Is that because, I think it took some money out of them, maybe?
Well, on our consent agenda, we've got the, um, excuse, I thought I just seen...
It went up, that's what I've, it's not, not a lot, just...
Is it interest?
Yeah, thank you.
They get a lot of interest in that fund then? Twenty, over $20?
Now, on our agenda, we got in, in, B, is artists and residents till their fund request. And I don't see what the request...
I had, I had that here.
Okay, all right, we'll wait till we get to that then. All right, so we're all set on the Treasurers' Report. Here is a motion and a second. It's all in favor of the Treasurers' Report. Okay, unanimous. Okay, next, artists and residents. That's Jeff.
So this is a request from Deb Daly. She's our librarian. She has, she usually does one request a year to get artists and residents here from the Tillner Fund.
Right.
I'm just going to read the requesting letter to you all. Dear Shasberry School Board, I'm requesting funds, funding to bring the Shasberry Elementary School and Musical Artist and Resident Group called Burlington Taco Drummers. We would like to schedule them to come to school for one day in June 2015 to do a day of workshops with students and a performance. Up to 35 students at a time can join, can enjoy 30 to 90 minute lessons with Pat and Sensi, up to four and a half hours of contact time in all, one day plus, plus a performance. The charge is 18, $1,825 and travel expenses of estimated cost of $370. The total we are requesting is $2,195 to cover the one day event, with the funding being taken from the Linda Tillner Fund. Thank you for supporting enrichment activities that our students can benefit from and grow. Sincerely, Deborah Daly.
Okay.
Motion, will you grant that?
Okay, is there a second?
No second.
Okay, Jeff Lee seconded it. Questions, any?
Is there any amount of money that's earmarked to take out of that fund every year?
No, well, they use that Tillner Fund, there's, right now, there's 7,800 in there.
Right, and this will bring it down to 56.
That, that'll benefit the kids, so.
Absolutely.
We've always done that, so.
Is that how...
All right, so I have no problem with it, so there's a motion and a second, so all in favor. Unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Keep in mind that that fund is dwindling. Just, I just keep people, you know, in mind, that's, that's one fund that eventually will be gone. Okay, consent agenda. I need a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Go ahead, Rich, Richard.
On the minutes, I've got two corrections to be made on page two.
Okay.
After all that discussion about whether or not David could vote on the Treasurers' Report, I said that the motion was passed unanimously, and of course Dave abstained on that.
Okay.
So that's line 32.
Okay, yeah.
Line 33, I've got a labeled budget status report, and that was actually the budget transfer request that we were talking about.
Okay. Thanks, Richard. Okay, anybody else? So, okay. Okay, we have the warrants.
This is where we ask questions.
That is correct. You, you've got questions, you ask them now, yes.
Not, I don't have a, just clarification.
Oh, okay. No, that's fine, that's fine.
What is Avea? Is that licensing or something? Service contract, it says.
That's the phone.
What page are you on, and what's the warrant number?
Page one.
Okay, and what's your number on the top of the page? Probably stapled over, probably.
The cover page, the very top.
19?
19, yeah.
No, okay. Oh, oh, no, no.
Should be our phone service.
Yeah, I think it's our phone service.
I think these are the ones.
But I don't know what page you're on.
It sounds it.
Yeah, what I...
Yes, I think it's a voucher, 2011.
Yeah, page one.
Page one, the very top. Service contract, I think that's our phone.
Avea is the number for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where he asked about the questions, too.
Take it, just take it. If he's got another question, that's fine. I'd rather have you ask it now.
Maybe, maybe it has to do with something with that service contract, but I was just seeing under telephones.
On the budget status report.
Am I asking the wrong time?
You're asking, I can ask it now. We're into it.
Oh, you came to it too quick. Sorry, can't find it now. Oh, there was $765.36 over budget?
Four.
Telephone?
Oh, I, yeah, I didn't, I didn't look at that, so.
Okay.
What document are you looking at?
Am I asking, oh, I'm in, I'm in the budget.
This is for the phone?
Yep. Shasberry Revenue for the Board.
And what page are you looking at?
Oh, number five.
And what's the line item?
Um, it's four from the bottom.
Yeah. And that we're running, you're asking that we're running, you're noting that we're running in a negative.
Yeah, I just was wondering maybe what caused that to be over. And there's just one more question. You had something pulled from Summer Help from, on the same page. That can't be...
That's under custodial.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's, um...
You did that transfer.
Yeah, but that's...
That's the transfer that you tabled, is that what you're asking with Summer Help? Is that line item?
Could be, I just, I just, uh...
Yeah, because that's, that, we know that it's, it's over, so the transfer that you tabled last month, and we didn't have again this month.
Had the telephone.
No, has the transfer to put money into Summer Help, because you're undefunded in that.
Okay.
So that'll be taken care of. It's not unusual for, I mean, you know, when this budget is built, you've got to remember, this budget would have been built last October.
Right.
So many of spending levels are estimates, and so it's not unusual that when we get to this time of year, we start doing transfers to where there are, there are negative funds...
So, many of spending levels are estimates, and so it's not unusual that when we get to this time of year, we start doing transfers to where there are, there are negative fund balances. Just like there'll be some surpluses too, like you saw in the severance one, and that's where they're gonna make the transfer from.
Okay. You all set, Larry? Jeff?
Yep.
Oh, second.
It's all right, you, if you've got some other questions, you can have them-
And maybe he just answered the question. It was the software from the KIP fund?
Okay.
Thirty-six hundred dollars. I know that you took, oh-
Again, could you give me the page you're on?
Oh, page one, I'm sorry.
You're still on the budget status, right?
Yep.
The second page one, not the first page?
Yeah, the second page one.
Okay.
Sorry, it is right four from the bottom. And you can answer, and I just-
Well, we can get that.
Yeah. Put it on, so you're, you're, you're asking what the software was that was born, or why it's running in a negative? It, it looks to me like it was running negative, there was apps, there was no money budgeted for it, so was the KIP fund?
That's, that's the money that, that the board approved to buy the Chromebooks for three two six last year.
So we're recording the expense, but it didn't come from the budget, so that's why it's showing that it's a negative.
It came from another fund that we have, it's on the Treasurers Report.
Okay. All ready? Okay. Larry?
One question on procedures. This month's warrants contain voucher number twenty, which is payment to David's wife Melanie for her treasurer's work. Would, we wanna continue doing that, because that's gonna cause Dave to either abstain from the consent agenda as a whole, or do we wanna set it up so-
Well, it's either that, or we just do that separate.
Well, that's, that's what I wondered, if it should come as a-
Take it off the consent agreement, whenever we're paying the treasurer, and have it be a separate vote?
Yeah, that's, that makes sense.
I'll make that note.
That way there, you can, you can still vote on the consent agenda. Yeah, okay, good, good idea. Okay. Before I'm set with that, we, we do have a resignation. Fourth grade teacher, Susan Phelps.
She was, she was here.
She was here.
Forget it.
Okay, and we also have, well, we'll, we'll deal with that after, but we also have the field trip for the May fourteenth Highland New York Rocking Horse Ranch, page six. I was gonna talk about this a little bit at the chair's report. And because of the, we need to look at this, we're gonna do this, we do have the money in the transportation for this trip.
This is different.
That's, uh-
It's different.
You're thinking of nature's classroom.
Yeah, I called it closet last time. Okay, thank you, I'll back up then.
This is just a one day trip, so.
Thank you, yeah, I even looked at that, and I still call it, anyway, I'll talk in my report on the other trip. It, it's tough to, it's tough to find good teachers out there, and it's too bad that Susan's moving out of the area, and it's, like I say, it's a tough thing, but we wish her well and everything, she, I'm sure she'll be missed, but unless we could talk her into staying, let her husband go to New York, it doesn't matter, I guess, but.
I personally, I personally wanna thank her for the two years of service with me here, she's been, she's been my go-to person on a number of occasions, she's been here quite a while, knows, knows Shastberry well. And she's been very helpful to me in a number of different ways, and I'm really gonna miss her as both a colleague and as a teacher, the kids are gonna miss her also.
Okay. All right, so, then we had the field trip, wrong one I was thinking of, anyway. There is a motion, I think, on the floor, and there was a second, I think it was Jeff. All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous, okay. Who's the clerk on this board, I can't even remember.
I'm the clerk.
Oh, you're the clerk. We should probably send, um, some letters, yeah, from, from the board. Okay? Thank you. Okay, policy. We have a policy number fifty-eighty-five, it's search and seizure, and this is for adoption. I need a motion and a second. Holly motioned it. Larry seconded it. Okay, discussion. I guess we're all set with this policy? Okay. All in favor of the policy? If there's no discussion. Or if there is, I'll back up.
Were the questions all answered, but you had-
Well, this has been back and forth to the policy committee, I don't see. Actually, nobody's adopted this yet, it's been warned. And it was warned on one fourteen fifteen. And it's been at least two and a half months of them talking about it, making the changes, although I don't see the changes crossed off here, and that's, that's normally what they do. But I think, I know-
I think they did that in the warning, but not that, yeah.
Yeah, right.
This is the cleanup version.
This is the cleanup version, so. Larry?
Personally, against this particular policy, as it's presented to us, I feel much more comfortable taking the school board association's policy verbatim. We know that's been tested, we know that that's been in front of the legal folks that need to put their approval on it. I, I think this opens the door for some questionable methods that I'm not comfortable with, so.
So what are you telling me, you wanna table this policy?
That's, that's, um-
Well, I don't think you'd wanna table it, when you wanna send it back to the-
Well, yeah, we could.
With recommendation.
Otherwise, if you table it, it's just gonna come back to you to, to adopt again, after everybody else is adopting, and I would say that if you got an objection to something, you should-
So we, we want us to send it back, and not vote on this?
With your representative from, to the policy committee, with whatever notation you have.
All right. Put that writing-
Unless, I mean, you, you potentially still have the vote to pass it, that Larry could be the only one objecting to it.
Well, Jeff, Holly, what do you think?
It may be nice to see what the original, because it got adjusted since the last time, right?
Mm-hmm.
And there's not marked in here what the adjustments were.
Right.
Correct.
It was on the, the copy before.
The copy before, which we don't have, so I mean, I really can't comment on the adjustments.
All right.
I mean, it could have been-
And that's always gonna be the case when we have board changes, you know, because they warned it back in January.
Yeah.
So my suggestion would be, you could put it to a vote, and if it fails, then refer it to Holly to take to the budget committee with whatever, I mean, the policy committee with whatever Larry's concerns are.
Yep, okay. So all in favor of this policy? I'll, I'll vote for it. All right, so it's one, three against. So we'll go back to the policy committee.
Please give me your concerns.
Yes. There, I want Larry to write his in, on paper.
He doesn't have to do it tonight, but he could, before, when's your next policy committee meeting?
Next, in, in May, they skipped this month.
So it'll be the first Monday in May? Yeah, so you got till then, Larry.
Okay, all right, facilities.
You have the, you have the generator, you gotta do the budget transfer for the generator. You thanked Tim for the savings, but-
Yeah, I did, I did. Okay, we have a budget? Budget transfer for six thousand dollars for the generator, under contracted, it's coming out of contracted transportation. So I need a motion.
So moved.
Make that, and Holly seconded it, all in favor of that budget transfer. Unanimous, thank you. That's done, you need that back?
Nah, I'll just mark it as.
Okay, now, facilities.
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, personnel, benefits offerings, I think we've had that.
Yeah, you had that, now you gotta read that motion.
Yep, thank you. Okay, beginning July one, two thousand fifteen, the board agrees that eligible employees not subject to a collective bargaining agreement will be offered benefits which are standardized by employee classifications. Detailed information regarding benefits, offerings, and eligibility criteria will be published in the employee handbook of the Southwest Vermont Supervisor Union and its member districts. And you need this back?
Nope.
Okay.
You might wanna give that to Richard, so he doesn't have to.
Okay, oh, you got one?
Yeah.
Perfect, okay.
Well, this is a large print.
Okay. Principals' report?
Were you taking, doing that as a motion or not? It's a motion to-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you need to vote to transfer, yeah.
So moved.
All in favor?
No, you're second.
Oh, Holly, okay, Jeff seconded it. Okay, all in favor of the motion? Aye, unanimous.
The effects of your illness are showing.
I should've stayed home, but anyway, okay, now it's the principals' report.
Sure.
I think.
As I, as I stated earlier, we started SBAC testing last week, finishing up the makeup portions of that right now. I wanna thank Laura and her, her office, and the SU office for helping prepare both our students and our teachers for this new endeavor. It's been a learning experience all the way around, from, all the way from Laura all the way down to me, to the teachers, to the kiddos. All the kids are doing great with it, for the most part, you know, they're, they're battling through it, the technologies work really well. As of, one of my biggest concerns was the, the technology piece, Frank and his department has been on top of things when it comes to that. We had Sally Bisacchio here for the full two weeks, helping out in case something did go wrong with the technology, which luckily, nothing, nothing has. And we spoke too much about what SBAC is all about, and what we get for scores come July, and once we, we know that, I'll share that with the board. I wanna say, I went to the PTO meeting last night, they said thank you for the card and flowers, that you all sent them, they very much appreciated that from the board. We also implemented a new dismissal procedure, which we're still tweaking a little bit, but it's been, it's been a pretty positive change for the most part. We now have the buses coming all together at once at three fifteen in the afternoon, rather than scattering in between three and three twenty in the afternoon. So, I would say, most of the days that I'm out there, the parents are pretty much out of there by three-ten, and then the buses come in all at once, they pull in, they block the driveways, and they take our kids, and they take them on their way, and it's pretty quick and, and seamless for the most part. We're still dealing with some parents wanting to park in places they shouldn't park, and we're addressing that with those parents, but I'd say for the most part, it's much safer out there in the afternoons, with the buses out of the way, and kids aren't jutting in between them. That's all I have.
Okay. You could put a sign out there, Carl will be told if it's here for two minutes. Just kidding, I'm kidding. Okay, the only thing I had in the chair's report is, is the sixth grade trip in May?
Fifth.
Fifth grade, thank you, I'll get it. Anyway, something that I've asked this board to consider too, we are gonna do, make that trip possible for, with the, the funding of this year, something that concerns me with this, talk about caps and everything else, not knowing what the legislature's gonna do. And I've said before, we wanna do it for this, for this year, for this, you know, this fifth grade. But we wanna do, we don't wanna take away from the rest of the kids coming down, the newer fifth graders. So something to think about, putting this in the budgets. I, I have no idea what's gonna happen, I don't think anybody else sitting at this table does, as far as grants or anything like that, usually when they have a grant, it goes away, and you're, you're stuck, you, you blow your budget out of proportion, and you're left to pick and choose, what do you wanna keep in there, I think, I think this, this trip for these kids are, it's very good, so, I'd like to have it happen every year, but can we do that? I don't, something to think about, what we're gonna do. And that's why I've said I wanna, you know, I wanna start budget preparations early, earlier this year, so we, we can look at, see what we have, and how we're gonna sustain everything.
You do have funds this year in your transportation, it came in enough to-
That's where, that's what-
Up to probably eight thousand.
Yeah.
No more than that. And if I, the last time I saw it correctly, you're about seven thousand forty dollars is what they're requesting from the budget?
It's actually plus the other five hundred fifteen for transportation estimate today, so about seventy-five, seventy-six hundred.
So, based on the figures I saw from your transportation balance, you could, you can safely fund eight thousand dollars?
Right.
Which would then cover that, you know? But, your point is valid, do you want to make that up, come budget time, you're gonna have to decide whether-
Well, I'd like to, and I'm sure the other board members want to, but it, it's, you know, it's just putting the pressure on with all these unforeseen things between the legislature, and what's a state gonna do, and you really, it's, it's tough to try to, to plan exactly what can we do at this point, and I'm, I'm hoping we can still do it, to put it, inject it into the budget. And I, I think it's a well-worth thing to do, but, anyway, just people be thinking, and maybe we can get somebody, a large benefactor, to move in here, and give us all kinds of money. Larry?
You already have Larry, yeah.
Oh, that's, yeah, okay.
Okay. Thinking of that scenario, one of the things that we can also request from the folks up in Montpelier is to shift the expense of, of pre-K, the three and four-year-old expenses that are coming towards us.
Yeah.
Okay, out of education, and put them over into human services where they, where in my opinion, they belong. And just that act alone will, will free up thousands of dollars here in Shastberry, but millions again across the state. And it puts the, I'm not advocating that we discontinue any one of those services, it's just put the, the task of paying for them on a broader tax base.
Yeah.
And, and give, it, it's funny, we started off this conversation when the, when the folks went back to Montpelier with, with the idea that we were gonna reduce the burden on the property taxpayers of the state. And we've done nothing to, to address that. And there are a few simple things that we could do
Yep.
that, that would make a major impact in that area, so, again, that, that's one, we, we know what it cost us last year, I think it was in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yep.
I'm not sure if Jim-
Think this following year, it'll be another sixty-two or seventy thousand dollars.
Well, I'm not sure where that stands, if, if that's really moving down the road, or if they actually-
I thought, were we gonna get a reprieve on the pre-K for next year? It's like sixty-two or seventy thousand.
Well, on the three-year-olds.
On the three-year-olds, yeah, that's why I was referring to the money lines.
Yeah, and we gotta reprieve on the three-year-olds this year.
Right.
Next year-
There was conversation of putting it back another year.
There, right, and we have not heard any, any word on that yet. And whether there would be, because that, they're recognized, that they'd said in the meeting, the legislature, that that's another unfunded mandate, you know, and they realize that now, they've pledged no new unfunded mandates. What they're gonna do with unfunded mandates, that they haven't actually mobilized yet. They haven't, they haven't said.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, I need a mo, or our next meeting is, regularly is May thirteenth. So, I need a motion to adjourn.
Holly, did you have something else?
No, if you, no, fine, I didn't-
I didn't know you were on other, I'm sorry. I just, I just had two que, Mr. Colkeen answered my list I had from the last meeting, but had in trying to catch up to see how things work, and, you know.
That's, that's fine.
Had we, had anybody done any thinking about the second meeting? To discuss, as, like, these caps and-
Yeah, I've, I've got a look at that, and how I do that, I've, I've got- Yeah, I've got a look at that, and how I do that, I've got some conflicts with some of it, so I've got to think about it, look at all my other meetings I've got, and committee meetings, and we'll discuss that one. We have talked about that, so...
Should we try to have a solid discussion next board meeting? So, because I mean, other dates might work, now work for other people, you know, if you come back with dates, Holly might say, no, I have conflict.
Right, right, yeah, let's do that, and we could have a...
So you come with a calendar and try to figure things out for second meetings.
Plus, you never know when the emergency ones are either. They're always there. Yeah, we can discuss that.
What you would actually want on an agenda for a second meeting.
I mean, you, we've talked about having a business meeting first, and then the other meeting, second, instead of having all the business and trying to whack it all in together, so. Anything else? You sure, no, if you got a question to ask?
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, you said we'll think about it, a month has gone by, now we're gonna think, now two months have gone by.
I'll get, I'll call you, I can get back to you, I just gotta, I don't know, my time is...
You see, I'm trying to draw a picture for the budget time, I'm seeing we have this, 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 and I don't know what they are, and so, and we talked about getting the community involved, and parents, and...
Yes, we did, yes, we did. And we will do that.
Thank you.
And I promise not to delay it. Anybody else?
Longer.
I just, I'm under the weather today, so... All right, did you make a motion?
I did.
All right, and Holly seconded it, so all in favor? Aye, we are now adjourned.